8:00 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up at the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimonies on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
John Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. We have a request to pull an item. Mr. Appicello?
Well, I actually have two requests. I have a request to add an item under City Attorney. That would be the State of Oregon Department of State Lands Public Recreation Facility License. And I'd like to ask, when we get to it, to continue the ordinance 2018-01 to the next council meeting.
Any particular placement for the first?
You can put that under City Attorney. I can discuss.
All right. Real good. Any objection? Okay. Great.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would like to pull number two from the consent agenda.
Okay. Well, I haven't even read them yet, so I'm gonna read them first. We're at the consent agenda for the regular meeting minutes of meeting, regular meeting, October 23rd, 2017, 6:00 PM, and the regular meeting minutes of regular meeting, November 13th, 27, 6:00 PM. And you want to pull number two?
Please.
Okay. Anyone else?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion? Hearing none.
Consent agenda number one, correct?
Yes, number one. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Counselor Walkie.
On the last page of the minutes of November 13th, 2017, about halfway down the page, it states something that I did not say. I went back to the video and listened to it. I clarified that Mayor Williams, with Mayor Williams, that grant money was allocated to the position of downtown manager for Bay Area Emergence Association before I was on council. And I did not participate in the decision to make that grant of money to the Bay Area Emergence Association. I would like to replace the words "she was appointed" with "grant money was allocated to."
Motion?
Yeah. I guess.
Make a motion on that, or are you making the motion on that?
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes of November 13th, 2017, with that correction to that paragraph.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for the correction.
Thank you.
Yep. No counsel deliberations. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by the citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. First on our list, Mr. Patrick Alexander.
My name is Patrick Alexander, and, oh, I've left a copy of the letter I was going to read up there. Just one second. You can tell it's deadline day. Okay. Good evening. My name is Patrick Alexander, and I'm the president of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. I'm here tonight to make a request, which I would like to preface with an update. As many of you know, our group operates a daytime homeless resource center and an emergency overnight weather shelter, both located in Taft Hall. Our emergency shelter was recently issued a notice of violation by the city planning director based on his determination that the overnight use of the building was inconsistent with the area's zoning. The planning director accompanied the notice of violation with a draft assurance of voluntary compliance, which our group completed and returned by the stated deadline. As part of that assurance of voluntary compliance, our group requested that the city initiate a zoning amendment to allow emergency shelters as a conditional use within the Taft Village Core Zone. The planning director informed us that such a request might be most appropriately directed towards the city council rather than planning staff, and hence my presence here tonight, and hence the letter in front of you, which I will read briefly for the record. Dear members of city council, in my capacity as president of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter Board of Directors, I am writing to request that the city council initiate a zoning amendment process to allow emergency shelters as a conditional use within the Taft Village Core Zone. Such an amendment would mirror the provision for emergency shelters that is currently present in several of the city's commercial zones. The Lincoln City Warming Shelter's long-term plan is to establish a permanent home for our homeless resource center and emergency weather shelter using a 3,000-square-foot prefabricated steel building that has been pledged to us by a donor. Realistically, there is very little chance that this building will be completed in time for next winter, meaning that we will, in all likelihood, seek to operate, to continue operating, our emergency shelter in Taft Hall from November 2018 to March 2019. Initiating the zoning amendment that we have requested would allow our group to apply through the normal planning department channels to operate our emergency shelter as a conditional use. This process would allow for rigorous evaluation of our application and give an opportunity for community feedback prior to any decision being made. During this process, our board of directors would stand ready to advocate on behalf of an emergency weather shelter. So far this season, the shelter has been open for 23 nights, providing 261 bed nights of accommodation at times when the coastal weather was at its worst. The need for an emergency weather shelter is clear, and I hope you will see fit to initiate the zoning amendment process that will allow us to provide this service to our community. Yours sincerely. That is it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, I'll leave the letter in your hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. John Force.
Hi, I'm John Force, 1820 Northeast West Devils Lake Road, Lincoln City. I was here two weeks ago briefing you about the safety issues at my rival's event, the rival of my Nelscott Reef Big Wave Classic Event at Canyon Park, and about the safety issues at my rival's event illegally staged at Canyon Park with no special event permit or insurance for park. After 13 years of my paying over $15,000 for insurance and permits, Ed Dreistad told Adam Wagner of the competing event that they didn't need a permit and to go ahead and run their event. I detailed the issues to the city council and Ron Chandler at the last meeting, and upon prodding by Susan Walkie, thank you, Ron said he was going to meet with Ed Dreistad and Chief Killian in a closed meeting to review the situation. A month ago, before my last appearance here, at a city council meeting after presentation by Justin Werner of Lincoln City Homepage on this same safety situation in violation of the special event permit requirement, and near fatality by a rolling log on city property, Ron Chandler said he would get back to Justin and answer the safety issues and pictures of the violations he presented. No one has responded to Justin or myself on any of these issues, leading me to believe that Ron and Ed think the problem is just gonna go away. I think this problem needs to be addressed by the city council in an open meeting, since this seems to be beyond the capabilities of Ron and Ed, and I can't go ahead with my contest until this is resolved for safety issues, and I've already missed one opportunity to run a event because of their confusion. I might add that a grant bestowed on me by the visitors' convention committee will be, uh, $15,000 will be unavailable to me because of these same safety issues created by the BCB and its representatives. Can I get a response from a city representative that is capable of resolving this issue? That's my question.
I don't think you can hear.
Nobody seems to wanna have anything to do with it.
Your Honor, I'll just tell you that the meeting with Mr. Chandler is this week. He's on vacation at the moment, but there is a meeting set up with Mr. Killian and Mr. Ed and myself, actually, so.
Okay, great.
And this'll be a closed meeting?
It's a staff meeting with legal counsel. Yeah.
There's no reason it can't be an open meeting. I'd like to be there to answer your questions.
This is a, it's a legal question for me, and I'm, I've already provided advice, and we're gonna meet and talk about it. So, we'll, after we have our meeting, someone will get ahold of you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's not a satisfactory answer to you, John, I know, but it's moving forward.
Hope nobody dies because of this irresponsibility. Knuckleheads. Yeah, you, Ed.
Okay, John.
Thanks.
That's enough. Thank you very much. And I just remind everybody, this is a time to bring your issues forward, not to attack members of staff, okay? Let's keep it civil. Where does that go? Next, Mr. Justin Werner.
Honorable mayor, councilors, my name's Justin Werner, and I'm a senior reporter with the local news outlet, LincolnCityHomepage.com. Last month, we published a story regarding harassment allegations raised against our city attorney, Richard Appicello, and it appears the employee who complained with a subordinate, was a subordinate of Appicello's, and her employment was terminated after she complained, or maybe even as a result of her complaining. You can always visit LCHomepage.com to get the full story. We wanna applaud Counselor Ward, who testified at the last council meeting that he didn't wanna hold any more backroom meetings, but wants to discuss the issues publicly, so kudos. We also wanna applaud Mr. Chandler, who testified that he would try to answer questions regarding our story, so we asked him the following. Did Mr. Appicello file a cross complaint against the alleged victim? Did the alleged victim receive a copy of this complaint? Was the alleged victim's termination influenced by Appicello's complaint against her? Was the alleged victim offered a non-disclosure agreement to sign? How much was the alleged victim paid to remain silent? And what discipline, if any, did Appicello receive? And what changes, if any, has the city implemented to avoid this type of thing from happening again? I've asked Mr. Chandler to meet with myself and other media representatives to receive his answers, so the public can be kept informed about this important issue. Thank you again for your time. I'm Justin Werner, and full story on LincolnCityHomepage.com.
Thank you, sir. Anybody who did not sign up wished to speak at this time? Mr. Narakis.
Good evening, council members and staff. I recently received my December sewer and water bill. These crucial city services cost my wife and I $1.63 a day. A dollar and 63 cents per day for life-giving water and the ability to flush, quote, "away", unquote, our waste is, in my opinion, a bargain. Thank you, Lincoln City, for reliably providing these valued services. Councilors, please ensure funding for the maintenance and growth of our water and sewer systems, on which our entire city depends. Please do not risk having the DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, impose heavy fines on the city and/or take us to court in order to achieve regulatory compliance. Thank you, Mr. Chandler, for authorizing continued detection of and elimination of groundwater infiltration, which negatively impacts our wastewater treatment plant. A recent example being finding close to 8 million gallons per year of infiltration in just one area of Lincoln City, pardon me, one area of Cutler City. I appreciate this opportunity to share my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak at this time? Seeing none. Carry on. Of course, I just moved off the page. Oh, good. See, these are the things you have to, yeah, I've lost two of them. Nah, that's okay. I'm sorry. Hang on, folks, we'll be right with you. All right. Need a computer that'll cooperate with me. All right. Presentations, property development offering, and also deed restrictions at Regatta Park.
So, I'm here with our consultant, John Southgate. Again, this is, we, as you know, we just presented at the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and made ourselves available to answer any questions on this property development offering. For the general public, we have eight Urban Renewal Agency-owned properties and eight city properties, I'm sorry, four Urban Renewal, that would be very ambitious, yeah, four Urban Renewal properties and four city properties that we're making available through a request for expressions of interest for property development. And we talked and heard your feedback and appreciate your comments on photos and typos. It's always wonderful to have more eyes on a document before you put it out to the public. And so, we're here again to ask if there are any other questions or comments about anything in particular that you would like to talk about more.
Yes. Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to again thank both of you for your good work. This is a beautiful document, and you have my comments, as you just mess, said, so I won't go through those. But I think, I think I'm optimistic. I think maybe something will come of this, and it'll be a good thing to get those properties moving, and hopefully, hopefully, somebody will want to, want to take you up on your offers. Thank you.
Well, I also wanted to make clear to everyone who's here, and maybe people just tuning in, that it's not that we don't wanna talk about it, it's just we just talked about it an hour before, so you're not hearing a lot of discussion here, it's 'cause we discussed it an hour ago, and you can tune into that on LincolnCity.org, so.
And we will make the property development offering available February 1st, and responses will be due March 15th, and everything will be available on the website on February 1st. And folks will have opportunity for questions. Everything is outlined in the request for expressions, expressions of interest. And four of the properties are for commercial, primary, commercial development with mixed use opportunities. And then there are three properties, as you know, that are city for residential development with focus on workforce and affordable housing. And one property which is, has a building on it, which is the former Taft-Nelscott-Dlake Fire District Number Two building. So, those are, that kind of encapsulates what those eight properties are, so, anyway. If anyone has any questions, they can contact the Urban Renewal Office or check out.
Counselor Walkie has a question for you.
I just wanted to comment that I think it's a beautiful presentation, despite all my comments at the last meeting. I think this is a great document, and I'm very optimistic about what will happen as a result.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're very excited and anxious to, to see what responses we get.
And I'll repeat what I said earlier, too, for those who are just tuning in and have been concerned about the amount of city-owned property and liquidating those things. We're taking great first steps here, and I'm excited for the future of these properties. So, well done. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got a little bit. Thank you, those properties have been sitting unproductive in inventory for quite a while. And the only suggestion I would have, as soon as you get that document printed, one copy run it over to Susan. Anyway, that's it. Thanks. Thanks, you guys, for doing a really good job.
Appreciate your work. All right. Deed restriction at Regatta Park. I'd like to thank the ladies and, ladies and gentlemen of the Lincoln City Council and Mayor Williams for having us here tonight for this presentation. I'd like to talk about Regatta Park here in Lincoln City this evening. It's, it's. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Would you both introduce yourself? Thank you. I was busy reading.
I'm Josh Brainerd. I'm the director at the Devils Lake Water Improvement District.
Thank you, Josh.
This is Miles Lestager. He's a community member and one of our esteemed committee members as well.
And then, Josh, you can hear a soft spoken fellow, so if you keep that microphone close to you.
All right. I can do that. All right. Devils Lake is one of Lincoln City's best-kept secrets. It's three miles long, almost 700 acres. The Lincoln City DCB focus groups have found many regular visitors that are unaware of the lake, and I personally have ran into this myself several times, that so many people travel through the city, and even people who have been longtime visitors here don't really know that it's there. It's well-hidden as a secret, I guess that's what that means. It is very underused and very underappreciated as a result of that. There was a recent economic impact study done on the lake, and not factoring in real estate and several other numbers here, it came out to over $2 million in recreation, lodging, and taxes that can be gained or lost from utilizing the lake. We have several events that are held there yearly, as it is, with many different visitors that come. The July 3rd fireworks, which I'm sure everyone's aware of, it's a great time, very beautiful out there on the water. We also have the Devils Lake Dash, the Devils Lake Revival this year also. Jeannie, our new Parks and Recreation Director for the city, is putting on an Arbor Day Festival on April 7th by Tree City USA, so we're really looking forward to that as well. As a side point here, to underscore the importance of this, we've held the Devils Lake Dash for how many years, Miles?
I started the Devils Lake Dash in 2012, and I was disappointed because I've spoken to the organizers of it now, and they have decided not to hold the Devils Lake Dash in 2018 because of the city's insistence that they not provide food and beverages in the camp, in the bottom parking lot because of the deed restriction. And this was the first athletic event that I have organized, although when in Portland, I did organize events for Rotary and the National Conference of Christians and Jews, which, which generated a great deal of income. This Devils Lake Dash, at a minimum, contributes $65,000 to the Lincoln City economy, and they should be allowed to have food and beverages in defense of the city. I know that when I came in earlier this year, or last year, the, the council was not willing to amend the deed restriction, and that caused them to violate our ordinance, and they had food there. And I think it was a good event, and they generate money, and we have to have the Devils Lake Regatta Park be able to be used. And it can't be used for events, whether they be functions like the Jet Ski Association or using the new bandstand or stage, which could be used for weddings and all kinds of events. And it should be managed like all the other parks in the city, with standards for getting a special license to do it, and the parks and recreation director is capable of that. So, I'd like to see the council address this issue now.
And that brings us to our issue on the deed restriction. It's from 1934. It is kind of antiquated in its language. It states, "No camping, campsite, or auto park shall be permitted within said park, and no concessions such as boat landings, boats for rent, dances, stores, restaurants, or other places of business, and no concessions for any game shall be permitted." We can kind of tell from that language there, too, that the spirit of this deed restriction seemed to be more focused on permanent installations, so no one, no one wants to put a McDonald's up in Regatta Park. That's not what we're asking for. It furthermore goes on to prohibit the sale of ice cream, pop, cigars, balloons. We don't, we don't plan on vending any cigars either. We really would just like some food vendors there for the events. It has been.
Josh, could you go back? Is that the actual wording of the deed is where it says, "They shall not be construed to prohibit"? It says, "These restrictions shall not be construed to prohibit the sale of..."
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
And that's the exact wording from it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that language is specific to the second party, which is a now-defunct organization, so.
It has been, Regatta Park has been home to events for over 80 years, so we can see that we have a long and lengthy history of people enjoying those grounds. I mentioned earlier, the Devils Lake Regatta, Redhead Roundup, the former Carp Festival, the Devils Lake Revival, the Dash that Miles was just speaking about, and our July 3rd Boat Parade and fireworks as well are regularly held there. Furthermore, the city's been investing funds in Regatta Park, adding some great features like the new bandstand, additional parking, and several other improvements there, the playground and everything to make it enjoyable for both residents and visitors. These events are crucial to making the guests aware of Devils Lake in addition, because we need people to show up and to enjoy themselves, to know the lake is there as a part of the city. But no vendors means no revenue, means no events. It's very difficult to have a party without a pop and popcorn, I guess. Here is an overhead of some of the investments the city has made in the park so far.
That shows a piece of bare land where there's a really nice improved playground.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that may be, may be an older photo. There's our Devils Lake monster, of course. Everyone can see how beautiful the park is.
Creature.
The creature. And here is a very nice shot of the, the new bandstand out there, and I believe they're finishing, the city's finishing paver work out there, too, and completing that investment as well. But beautiful day, beautiful park. Another picture there. And here's kind of an outline of a venue, if we were to have it at the park, as far as where we could set things up, where we could have parking and traffic flow. And that brings me to the, to the last point here. We would like the city council to instruct staff to take necessary steps to remove the deed restrictions from Regatta Park. We should operate in the same rules as all the other city parks. Vendors are definitely a healthy part of these events and should be allowed there. This is, this is a gem for our city. We look forward to Devils Lake becoming more of a key part of Lincoln City's recreational offerings and a stronger draw for visitors to our city, and both enjoy that mutual benefit.
I have a question.
Please. Mr. Ward?
Thank you.
When you say beverages, are you referring to alcoholic beverages?
No, we are not.
No, you're not? Just pop?
No alcohol. That's not what we're asking for.
We'd like to see the rules just like any other city park, and I think that is, would be fine, but the restrictions make it absolutely impossible to have an event there that we're having the 4th of July fireworks, which is for the city, and it gets a great crowd on a night so that we advertise two 4th of July fireworks displays. But we could have entertainment there, sell hot dogs and hamburgers and barbecue things, and it would be a fun event in anticipation of the fireworks at 9:00 or 9:30. So those are the kind of things that we'd like to see the park used for, and it's a beautiful park.
In addition to-
Counsel hidden.
My question is, do you have, is there any opposition to this idea that you have?
I do not believe so. We just have not had a decision made to actually physically remove this restriction.
Just thought I'd better ask.
I can't, I can't see a bad side myself to it, but in addition to what Miles was mentioning, you know, it's a benefit to local business as well, because we could have different local vendors down there. Many of them cater, and all these events, times however many events we have, are revenue that they're missing out on as well.
I have a question for Mr. Appicello. You mentioned a second party, and I'm sorry, I'm a little lost in the translation of-
The deed restriction we're concerned about is the one that basically says no commercial activity, but then there's some additional language later on that talks about, well, at the annual regatta or whatever it is, the second party, which is an entity that doesn't exist anymore, can sell the following items. That kind of a, we couldn't write a law that said you may only sell the following items. That restriction probably wouldn't work today, but that language just confuses things because the real issue is the first prohibition that says no commercial activity. The exception really doesn't play-
Well, it does to me in just a bit, in that, you know, I want to be very respectful if someone says, "Look, this is, these are my terms, and abide by them or not," but it seems to me there was a wiggle there that said, "Oh, but this is okay," and so that's how I'm going to help me make my decision.
One entity that existed could do it at their annual event, Regatta.
So then, following this, I guess, how do we go about, how do we change that and say, and without someone's permission?
That's, that's the problem, is it may not be very easy to correct. I mean, we, I, I'm aware that there's a lawsuit you can file to declare certain deed restrictions unlawful, but this doesn't appear to fit. Otherwise, I think you have to go through a process of finding people related to the grantor and somehow getting a release. Frankly, I don't know enough about the process and actually haven't spent very much time on it because I haven't been directed to do it. So if you direct staff to do it, then in-house we'll turn our attention to it. If you want it done, you can always contract with a title company and see if they can find who's the heir to the grantor and whether or not we can get whatever we need signed.
Right, okay.
I just wouldn't say it's going to be an easy process, though.
No, I understand. I just, I like the idea of having vendors, these events thrive, and I think, you know, it's important to move people to that lake, especially during peak times in the summer, get them off of 101. But then again, I want to be very respectful of the people who set the rules in the first place, but it seems to me they've said, hey, we understand, as long as, as you've said, not a permanent structure. Miles, you had something there?
I've done a little research through Ms. Annie Hall, and she knows the person who is the granddaughter of the, the grantor of this property that Lincoln City inherited, and I think she's still available, but she has retired.
And is that sufficient, Mr. Appicello, to have a, because there's not really an heir to it? I mean-
I'm not quite sure if that's going to be enough. I don't know enough about that process. I'm familiar with the process to declare them invalid, but I don't think this one fits.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
I have one more question. I've been to the promotions and the get-togethers that you're talking about at Regatta Grounds, and they're magical. I mean, truly, they're, you've done a nice job there, and I, and I hope it finds that we can fix things so that you can use it. That would sure be my hope. One concern that I have, though, and it's a little bit non sequitur, is the fireworks displays. Are you using environmentally friendly fireworks? Are you dumping those things right into the lake, which you're supposed to protect?
I'm not that familiar with the process of the actual fireworks itself. I do know that they do have quite a bit of recovery effort after the fact to pull those around, out of the banks and out of the water, if any of them do land in there.
But besides that, thumbs up. Hope you do it.
So there's another, there's another park on Devils Lake. So have you guys tried using Brown Bear as the staging grounds for this, and if not, what would be the problems with that? Just a different location and not nearly as many resources are set up there. Regatta has several resources, like I mentioned about all the investments the city has put into it with the bandstand, the playgrounds, and just the general dock area there as well is more extensive than it is at Brown Bear, so there's more- There's two docks at Brown Bear? Yeah. Yeah? Yeah. I'm just saying, if you can't put it on because of you can't sell stuff, couldn't you have it across the lake in addition to over there? I mean, it's one lake, and you got a jet ski, and you could go across and do those kinds of things. I mean, are there other ways to continue this wonderful thing that's going on and work around all the different properties? I mean, there's Sandpoint as well, so I mean, and would there be, I mean, I know that there's a lot of properties on the lake. Have you reached out to community members to say, "Hey, we can't sell stuff here. Is there a way that we could sell stuff in your backyard?" Or would you be able to handle this, or could we involve the community of people that live on the lake to participate in something that is about the lake? So some of those areas are just not large enough. Sandpoint's a very small park.
Well, sure.
And, you know, some of the community areas, the same. You have issues with access and blocking people's driveways and things like that, and Regatta does have that nice traffic flow pattern and the facilities that we like, and really the provenance of having those, those events there for the past 80 years are really something we'd like to continue as our tradition with the city and on the lake, if possible. Also, Miles, you said that we denied your request as a council earlier or last year. Wasn't it, you had the permit, and there was a time limit to something? I'm just, I don't recall us denying the, denying flat out the removal of it, so I just want to make it clear what happened when you came before us in a public comment regarding your application, and it wasn't the time to request the deed removal because it was during public comment, correct? It wasn't a formal-
I believe-
It was not a formal request to remove the deed, but because of the application, it wasn't the time to do that. So I just want to be clear that is this the first time anyone has tried to formally remove the deed, and not before?
I think it is the first time that we've formally done it, because I asked at the former, the previous meeting that I appeared at, just to allow the jet ski racists to have food so that they weren't, didn't have to take 75 cars and trucks to McDonald's and Burger King and every place else, and we did have that. We violated the law, but the police department was very nice. They continued to check the jet skis overnight and were really cooperative with the, with the jet ski organizers.
That's great. I mean, I just, I just, you know, want to make it clear. That's what I'm, I mean, this is the first request, not before. We didn't deny it before.
I don't, well, you didn't, you didn't give us the go-ahead, but you closed your eyes, basically, so that we could operate.
I didn't know anything about illegal activities going on, so I don't know about me closing my eyes to that.
Mr. Anderson?
Counsel Hohl, and I would agree. I don't think a formal request has been made. However, through public comments, we council actually directed staff to look into it to see about removing the deed restrictions.
Right.
So it's been on our docket for quite some time. I think what you see here is an impatient, rightfully clientele, citizens, saying, you know, can you move it up on the to-do list? And I'm not sure we can, because I always like to go to my two-page thing that we keep giving staff to do, and, you know, once again, you know what?
So, I mean, that could be, that could be something that we can't, we assess the cost associated with contracting that to a title company to try to find, instead of directing staff to do something else. I mean, it comes to a point where enough staff time, and if it's something important, we're going to have to pay more.
I think it's important in, so that I am able to get the jet ski association back, because they produce $75,000 of volume every year for the local economy.
Yeah, I think the key, though, is, is it important enough to, you know, look into the deed restriction thing? I, the rest of the events, you've heard positively, we think well of them. You know, it's back to a deed restriction, and we've got to elevate it, you know, if it's important enough to council to spend money on, direct, you know, of course, a contribution from another taxing district would be helpful in us doing the research to find the ancestry of this thing.
We've got a real heavy budget.
We all do. We all do, Miles. Thank you. Just sweeten the pot.
I'm going to turn this over to-
Please finish.
I was going to say, I want to turn this over to Jeannie, our Parks and Recreation Director, who has a couple solutions on tap as far as next steps available.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much. I'll be quick with this, because I think Ms. Counselor Anderson just put it all into a nutshell, what we were going to say. I'm Jeannie Sprague, Parks and Recreation Director, here with-
Ooh.
Do I have an, oh, that's brand new.
It took me over a year, so.
I'm Ed Drystott with the Visitor and Convention Bureau.
And we just want to be clear that the city of Lincoln City Municipal Court does allow concessions at events conducted in city parks, subject to review during the permitting process at all other city parks. Parks and Recreation does get revenue from those vendors. It also helps alleviate the success of the events at these parks, brings people in, keeps them in our parks, gets great press for our parks. The city has met with the executive director of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District and other community members who are requesting that we revise the deed restriction at Regatta Park. I won't go into that, because you just saw the presentation. The city is asking council to consider whether or not to pursue the removal of the restrictions so that it's equitable with other availabilities at other city parks, such as having vendors at other city parks. Another question is whether or not, like Counselor Anderson said, to expend in-house staff time on this request, as there's quite a bit of work to it and knowledge that needs to go into removing a deed restriction, or whether to contract with a title company or other professionals to attempt to remove the deed restriction as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And just to echo, I said thank you already. Just go, no, please, go.
Just to echo everything you saw in the presentation, I'm still absolutely stunned that back when we were doing the focus groups with folks staying in hotels and V R Ds here in town, that we talked to people who'd been coming here for 10 years, and some of them came here multiple times every year for 10 years, and when we put up that one board we had, "Hey, we're the town with the lake," and their reaction was, "There's a lake here?" It's just amazing that something that big and that nice and that amazing, just because of our topography, is hidden, and a lot of people don't even know it's there. I get a lot of people asking me, you know, what can you do to help promote the lake? You know, we need to let people know about the lake, and how can we use the lake as an attraction and as an asset? That, that's a lot easier when there's things happening on and next to the lake. And, you know, the deed restrictions and I think the thought back when they were put into place was the right thing. It was the era when everybody was building the car camps and, you know, commercialism was probably going a little crazy here. But I think we can stay within the intent of the original restrictions. There won't be a commercial boat dock there. There won't be a campground put in there. There won't be permanent concessions so somebody can make some money there. We're looking at selling hot dogs and curly fries at a one- or two-day event, and that little bit of a concession and that little bit of an ability will help my department immensely when it comes to letting everybody know that we have this incredibly wonderful lake.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Ed?
Yes.
Because you're speaking so highly of this, do you have money in your budget that can cover the expense of removing this deed restriction?
I honest, I honestly don't know. We could, we could look into it. I mean, maybe we can find out what it's going to cost, and this would have an impact on tourism.
It definitely would.
And I would like to have those shackles taken off, so maybe.
Mr. Ward?
Thank you. You know, reading the deed restrictions, I would agree with you that they were trying to not turn it into a commercial area, and I'm wondering, this question is actually for the city attorney, is that opinion, are we able to adopt that opinion, and would it be viable from it for a challenge? I guess I'm not saying it's the way I'd like to say it. If we just say we're in compliance, right, we'll be in compliance until somebody says, great-granddaughter comes up and says, "You're not in compliance." Well, at that time, we address it. Until then, can't we just be in compliance because we're of the opinion that we are in compliance?
Well, I can, I can say that the sky is green, but that doesn't make the sky green. I can, you know, there are certain things we can defend, but what you really want to do is you really want to get someone with the right to enforce this to sign off and consent, because ultimately, if you get that, you can get it removed, as opposed to, let's take our chances and see if anybody sues.
Well, you know, at that point, they're going to file an injunction against you, right? And at that point, you just, okay, sorry.
Well, but sometimes that's not the case. I mean, we've, we had a property where it automatically went back to the state of Oregon. We're in the textbook about, you know, because we did not use it for the purpose for which it was given, it automatically went back to them. So I wouldn't want to take the chance. I'd want to do it right.
Well, that's, that's would be my biggest question about proceeding, is I would like to see something presented to us that said, "Here's what it's going to take to get to that next step," without, you know, I, this is an odd example, but my son has a car without a title on it, and I called DMV what steps it's going to take, and it was like six different steps just to get a title on a car, and I'm like, "No, it's yours. I don't want to deal with it," but I had that information in front of me, and so that's what I would be asking for, is what do you have to do to get us moving forward? And that's when I'd like to really make a decision. If it's going to be 40 hours a year time doing this, I'm not so keen on that, but if it's, you know, three emails and we're done, I'm good.
So, Mr. Mayor, so Ed, did I hear you volunteer to check in to see how much it would cost if we were to pursue a title company, or?
I threw a lot of qualifying adjectives in front of everything I said.
You were directed to do that?
Well, if I was directed to do that, my boss's boss told me to do it. I probably wouldn't have much choice, would I? I think I could, I could explore the cost with a title company and see how much they would charge to search it and get rid of it.
That's the place to start.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I think consensus, though, we've, certainly the council is interested in clearing the way in Regatta Park, from what I'm hearing, so we'd like to do it legally and not have to revisit it. So I don't think you're gonna find any roadblocks from the council, it's just a matter of how does it get done, and the priority of it.
Or we take over the state park, and that becomes our property, and then we can do whatever we want.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I, I need to make a confession here. I have sold, as a member of the Board of Directors of a nonprofit in this town, I have sold hot dogs and hamburgers at Regatta Park, and lots and other, other foodstuffs. So it has happened, we were not aware of the deed restriction at that time, and I think as also a person who put in a lot of time and energy to get that stage built, I would like to see the most use made of that stage, and I would move to direct the City Attorney to investigate the costs and time of trying to remove this deed restriction. I probably, working with a title company, would be the, the best use of our time. I think we could leave that up to the City Attorney to determine. I second that.
Motion to second, discussion?
Well, I do just a little bit that I would be sensitive to, I know that, you know, Miles has said they want to get the events back, but then I'm also sensitive to what Counselor Anderson has repeatedly said, is you've already got a list, and, you know, I don't know how high up the food chain it is for me, other than if it's a quick answer, I'm good, but not days and weeks. That's all I had to say. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none, motion carries. Thank you, appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Ed.
And Jeannie, welcome, City Council. Okay, public hearings, public comments, no, nothing. Ordinances, is this the one we're pulling?
Well, I'd like to request that you continue this matter to the February, is it February 12th? I think it's February 12th, council meeting.
Because?
We've received, the City Recorders told me that there's some new informational materials out from the State of Oregon, and we'd like to try to incorporate it. I had only requested first reading this evening anyway, because we wanted to work out some forms, so we can not lose time by doing first and second at the next meeting.
Okay. Any objection? Seeing none.
I move to continue ordinance 201801 to the meeting on February 12th.
Second. Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. No resolutions, special order of business, construction contract award, Regatta Park retaining wall.
Your Honor, I need to recuse myself from discussion. One of the bidders is the employer of my soon-to-be son-in-law, so I need to recuse myself.
And I'm sorry, folks in the audience, especially those of you with deep voices. I know. Yeah, I can hear everything you're saying, I just assumed not. Thanks. Carry on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm helping out with the Regatta Wall, retaining wall project, which we've probably talked about in the past, so I'm giving Jeannie a hand with our award tonight, and it's kind of the perfect, the perfect timing. It sounds like I'm pretty loud there. This, this project, in your packet, I included a picture, I'm not sure if you took a look at that, but it's the South Regatta Retaining Wall Project. It has some large block up against it right now to hold it in place, it's in the chances of falling over at this point, and so we have created a design that will actually fit with, you know, it's ADA for the smaller gazebo that's at the south of the park. It will also have a landing, so it'll be two feet, and then you'll actually have a place to sit, and it'll vary in size from the west to the east, from probably about five feet to eight feet to 10 feet, at that very furthest east section. So it includes constructing, constructing 348 feet of concrete block retaining wall, and that's approximately two feet high, sidewalk, curb, 3,100 square feet of concrete plaza, and electrical outlets. And so we advertised this project, it was designed by our engineering staff, and they put the contract documents together and put them out to bid on November 29th, and so we have five bidders, and Chris Diles Contracting LLC is the lowest bidder in the amount of And then we had RK Concrete Construction Company at $114,480,04, Devil's Lake Rock Company at $115,071, and AES at $144,438, and K&amp;E Excavating Incorporated at $159,725. And so they were, Chris Diles was our lowest responsible bidder, they completed the Phase Two of Harbor Street between 15th, well, probably 18th Street and 21st Street, so you're familiar with that project. They did paving, storm, sidewalk, and the paving on that project. And then they also just completed the Northeast 36th Sewer LID Sewer Line Project, so those are a couple that they've done for us, and successfully. And then we did the engineering in-house, so unless you have other questions, I can explain this project a little bit further. Staff is recommending that the construction contract award be awarded Chris Diles Contracting LLC in the amount of $101,79,000, with a construction contingency of $10,107, 10% of the bid amount, for a total of $111,186,000.
I have a quick question, if I might.
Certainly.
Where it says stairs for $15,500, I see remove stairs, are they putting something in that I'm not seeing?
Yes, the stairs will be 20 feet wide with a five-foot section that has a railing, so that's...
In the same place?
In the same place.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't say anything about that, it just says remove stairs.
It's in the, in the same place, so there'll be a nice wide stairway, so when you're down boating or using that part of the park in the dock, you'll be able to walk up to the restrooms, and you can also, it's also, you know, a good seating place, but the, the landing, it'll be like a two-tier, so it'll have the sidewalk, and then two feet of the block retaining wall, and then a large flat area, and then go on up to the top, top level, so you'll be able to put some picnic tables there, instead of having them up on the asphalt, you know, near the restroom on the backside.
Again, I just didn't see them being replaced in this drawing.
So it's a, it'll be a great addition to the park, and allowing people more space to sit and look at the lake.
Good. Mr. Mayor? Yes, please. Mr. Ward?
First of all, thank you so much for all this breakdown, that's noted and appreciated. Two quick questions, what did our, what did our engineers say that they thought it was going to cost?
$94,000.
$94,000, so it was a little over theirs.
Yes, a little bit.
Yeah, okay, and where was their discrepancy?
It was in the asphalt, so it went from $7,000 to $13,000, and then the next bidder's unit price, I think, was 12, so the asphalt was the, that $4,000.
My last question is, is on the mobilization, how come there's such a price difference in mobilization? There's gotta be a reason for it.
It just depends on, I think actually, Chris Diles Construction is still mobilized here, so that's, that's one reason, but again, that one varies, you know, people can put whatever they want to in that.
So the farther they're away, the higher mobilization costs, is that what it is?
Normally it would be, but I've seen it go the other way around, too.
Thank you, thank you very much for this, too.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, please.
So, if we could just give a once-over, mobilization is getting the equipment here, right?
Yes, and, and actually, contractor can put whatever they want to in mobilization, so it's a real discretionary, you know, to that particular contractor.
So mobilization is not some, you know, it's not a transformer. I have a question for the drainage, I was looking at the, you know, I'm not a, an engineer or anything like that, just by going there, it seems like there's an awful lot of water. I remember before the renovation came, for the, where the swings are, where the new area was, I brought my kids there, and there was a lot of seepage that would come through that timber, never looked nice, and again, now, in this same kind of area, you have this kind of wet push, you know, all that weight kind of pulling down, and so my concern is that you've created a dam, I know, I know, I saw perforated PVC piping, and, you know, the crushed film and all that stuff, just for my own self, those, those four-inch pipes will be draining into, they're perforated and will be draining into the lake, or they're perforated, so that they do something else, like I just, I would love it to, you know, if it soaks into the ground and then wants to come to the lake, and not just push everything forward that we just built.
Right, right, and so they've, they've accounted for that in their design.
So it will be draining, or it will not be draining?
It'll, it'll drain, I can, I'd have to go to the plans and tell you exactly, all the detail on it, but yes, it's, they, they accounted for that, that's one of the big issues here, and we took care of that. So that's a good example that you mentioned, is the playground, this'll kind of have that same effect, you'll have a tiered area to sit, and we accounted for the drainage, we have some drainage pipe and, and a way for it to move fast, so it doesn't knock the wall down.
Okay, well, it's, it looks great.
So it won't have, it won't have that pressure of the drainage.
The other question I have is, I saw the removal of the bike racks and the ginkgo trees, do you have any plans to replant those trees anywhere, and if not, could we put those back in the ground somewhere? And then what are you doing for the bike racks, because I don't see them anywhere, or do you plan on putting something else there for people to wrap their bikes up with?
Actually, the bike rack, there's a 10-by-10-foot pad, which will be up by the pump station restrooms on that west end, so it's on the second, it's on the second page.
Move and install bike racks, okay.
Yes.
I see that.
So that'll be the, the bike rack location, and we always recycle, and, you know, when we take things apart, we save good plants and replant them, the Parks Department does that.
We do?
Yes.
As a general rule of thumb?
As a general rule, on almost everything, yeah, they never, never throw a good plant away, or a tree.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just finance, you said the estimate, engineer's estimate is around $94,000, so that must be the item from the Parks Budget Maintenance Fund, $94,000. Are there other projects, since this is gonna be, cost more, that are being nixed in there? And so where, we probably budgeted $94,000, so where are you gonna get the rest of the money?
Some, some of the other projects are coming in a lower amount, and so it balances itself out.
Yeah, we're doing well.
That's sort of, there is other projects or funds in there.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we focused on that.
All right, for a motion?
Move to approve the construction contract be awarded to Chris Diles Contracting LLC in the amount of $101,079, with a construction contingency fee of $10,107, which is 10% of the bid amount, for a total amount of $111,186.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Accused.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
You know, I didn't ask, when's this gonna start?
As soon as possible. As soon as possible, as soon as we get the contract finalized, so probably in a week or two.
Oh, yes.
Beautiful.
We're trying to get it done before spring.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right, we'll move on to City Manager, City Attorney reports. Mr. Killian?
Ron doesn't have anything.
And neither do I.
Okay, Mr. Appicello?
Your Honor, Council, you added an item earlier under City Attorney, it's the Public Recreation Facility License 11739-LI. I asked for approval of the State of Oregon Department of State Lands License, and after that, I'd also like a motion which would authorize me to amend the code, to delegate to the manager to have to do these standard licenses in the future. So first motion would be to approve the Public Recreation Facility License as requested.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none?
Wait, wait, I have a question. I was just curious, is this, is this a renewal, or is this a new license, or where does this come from?
I believe it's a renewal.
And then the reason that we're adding it at the last moment is because we just found out about it?
Yeah, it, I guess it came in last week, and they want it back with it by, you know, the first week of February, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I guess the, the question leads, is there something similar at Regatta Park, or other parks, and is there a, a list of these licenses that we should be doing all at once?
I remember addressing the Regatta Park one, not that one.
Really?
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, I, that's why the, I'm actually asking that you authorize an amendment to Chapter Four, to add standard licenses and renewals to the list of things delegated to the manager, as long as they're under a certain dollar amount, meets certain other criteria that are reviewed by the City Attorney, there's no reason for them to have to come to you, but because this clearly wasn't within the parameters in Chapter Four, I'm bringing it to you, and I'd like the, the second motion to authorize me to write the ordinance to add it to the delegation for the manager.
Further discussion? Is this something I need a roll call? Why not?
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the second one?
I would move to direct the City Attorney to include, to draft language, to include licenses, renewals, permits, grants, as giving the City Manager authority to, to sign such documents.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, we'll keep it consistent.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Then Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. All right, that covered it, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
All right, actions, if any, based on work session or executive session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd have, again, authorize City Attorney or staff to make another settlement offer, as discussed in executive session regarding the Smith lawsuit, including both options.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, I lost the word.
Do I accuse myself?
No.
No? I, I don't know, I don't have any information.
You can recuse yourself, since you weren't present, if you wish to do that.
You do have the opportunity to review that later, if you want. I can't vote later, so, same, you have the opportunity.
Real bad. Okay, I'm sorry, I totally lost my mind.
Motion made, second made.
Thank you, discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'll throw in my aye there. Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, could I ask the city attorney, we had under public comment a request from the warming shelter, and I guess, how do we handle such requests from the Gias?
Well, first, you could, one of you could ask to add it to the agenda, or you can bring it up at the end of the, the meeting here under councilor's issues. On this particular matter, the mayor, you, this is a conflict of interest issue, you probably would have to step out of it if it does come up. But you could either add it to the end as part of when you go around and ask each individual councillor if they want to do that. We've had a discussion about maybe this item on the agenda that we just did, actions if any based on a work session or executive session. We might want to say actions if any based on work session, executive session, or public comment, so that if you want to have a place on the agenda, should you want to bring it up at the same meeting. I don't know that you want to force yourself to do that. Usually you direct, you ask staff for their input. But if you bring it up at the end, I'm here, staff's here, we can certainly.
Well, I kind of like that idea, 'cause then it's orderly and we have a place to put it, rather than just this, oh, I need to get something in real quick.
So, right now, we, we would do it at the end under individual councillors if you want, or in the future, we can change that agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Go and, go and gone. All right, announcements or comments by city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Public Works immensely for their efficient work that they did during the storm this past week. It was incredible. Everybody was on the spot during the storm, after the storm. Someone who lives near two beach accesses, it was totally cleared out in twenty-four hours and taken care of immediately when called, so kudos to them, and thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'm gonna jump in if, with council's okay. Would it be all right if I brought Lila up just to talk about that real quick? Is she still here? I had meant to ask you while you were still here, Lila? Thank you for bringing that up. Not to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot. If there's a way you could just address just for the public, basically, any damages they might want to know about, or what happened?
Certainly. The largest one was D River Wayside, and the sand that was deposited next to Kylo's in the D River Stream. And then it also actually went on the east side of the bridge. And we have permitting that we can go in in emergency situation and cast, you know, go in and take the sand and cast it to the side. And so we removed probably eight hundred to a thousand cubic feet of sand, and it was the largest one I've ever been part of as far as how much sand was deposited and how much we had to move with the storm. And so it's really a good thing we didn't have high winds behind the, the high waves. And so that, that was huge, and we cleaned out that whole area, just moving sand out of the way. And then we had the large rains this weekend, and it helped wash everything else out that was on that east side, the driftwood, and all the sand that was deposited. But I, I've never seen it that packed with sand. And so usually we can just go in with a piece of equipment and pull it back. We have a contractor do that, pull the sand back and open that channel. And so anyway, we were able to get that done on Friday, and, and then it was back in business.
Well, and I was down on Thirty-second, and there was that big log tossed over the retaining wall, and I noticed there was a chip out of it. I don't know if that was new or old damage, and if you could just address any of our retaining walls, if there was damage to them?
Not that, not that we have seen at this point. And then the Parks Department also closed all of the beach accesses that day, and we closed the Taft Dock because of the logs underneath and, and actually some really large rock deposited up there. I'm not sure if they came from other, you know, retaining areas, but, so, they, all of our crews cleaned up, the Parks Department and our street crew, you know, as quickly as they could. So everything was back in order, so it wasn't, other than the motels that were damaged. I know Seadrift Sea, of course, you guys all know that.
And Canyon Park was fine?
And Canyon Park was fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're still inspecting, but for the most part, we, actually, the Grace Hammond Beach Access at Northwest Thirty-Fourth had logs on both sides of it, that had gotten through the culvert or else washed down, and so we removed those on Friday.
Great.
And we had to cut those up, there were, there were so many logs deposited, and there's so much down on Fifty-first Street, too, South Fifty-first and Taft. It's more than you see. And so we're, you know, we'll come back with that Taft Dock bid award. We're, we're trying to get through one more permitting, and so we, we would like to, if, if they'll allow us to, we'd like to have it done before summer. So you'll see that on the next, probably in February sometime.
Great, thanks, appreciate you. Mayor Williams? Sorry, yeah, go ahead. Either fight loud, guys.
Living on Anchor, did you, have you assessed the erosion that took place, or was that a high erosion area?
It, you know, it didn't seem to erode too much. I mean, there's a little bit of erosion, but, but not as much as you would have thought.
Also, on, at D River, the steps going down, how far down do they go? Because in my mind, when I moved here ten years ago, there was like ten steps, and now there's like four. So I mean, do we just let the sand keep going up, or do we ever remove all that down? Because, you know, going, you know, like the one hundred and thirty-one steps by the Nordic is pretty much one hundred and thirty steps, like, you know, that's pretty constant. But D River Wayside seems like there's, you know, ten feet of, of snow, of sand there built up, and what do we do?
You know, we don't pay as much attention to that one as we do our, the city actual beach accesses, because it's state parks. And so I'd have to probably get an answer from state parks for you.
I just, curious, you know, maybe, if it was ten feet less, then maybe that wouldn't have happened to, you know, to the north of that, you know?
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, the sand's gonna wash in wherever it wants to wash in.
Well, sure, sure, sure. I was just curious.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Okay, and I'm sorry, continue whoever was next. Comments? No? Okay.
Counselor.
Oh, wait. We're still in council comments, so if anyone has something.
Dick, did you wanna?
Well, one, I would like to continue to address this warming shelter issue, and maybe a, a motion to direct city council staff, or city council, city attorney or staff to bring back, you know, our options and action, necessary action.
Sure, I can, I can, if you want to put it on the.
Pros and cons.
Okay, well, at this point, then, I'd, I'd have to recuse myself from this, so Counselor Ward, you have to take over this discussion.
Would, okay, so you want this on the next agenda?
Well, I guess the question is.
Or you want it now?
Uh, next agenda, so we can think about it.
Okay, well, I can, I can write a staff report and show you what the code says and what the implications are.
Wait, that would.
That was a motion.
That's a motion.
A second.
Discussion. Okay.
Mr. Ward.
Yes, oh, I didn't see.
Just, just to make it clear, this is only to bring back information.
Yes.
That's it.
And tell you what your options are.
If, in accordance with this, you know, the Taft Village Corps removing it or not removing or operating.
The only, the only issue that would be presented is, this is what the code says, that council is authorized to initiate a code amendment. Initiating a code amendment doesn't mean that you're making the code amendment, it's only starting the process and thereby saving the applicant twenty-five-hundred dollars, 'cause a privately initiated application costs twenty-five-hundred dollars. So that's pretty much what the staff report would say, you know, privately initiated costs twenty-five-hundred dollars, and then they run it through the process. When someone comes to you and says, could you initiate it, they don't have to pay it the twenty-five-hundred dollars, and the application goes forward. But you haven't made a decision to approve it, you simply, basically excuse them from the twenty-five-hundred dollar fee.
That's what this is, to starting that process?
Well, that's a request.
That's what your motion is?
No.
No, my request is to bring it back to us.
Of that information.
Kind of that information and additional, so that we can then make the decision. Because, you know, contrary to what the city attorney says, that's not all there is. You know, I mean, I'm betting, I'm betting after he lays it out for us in a packet, you know, just like anything else, it's not always the money.
Yeah, like, like all city-initiated requests, it, it has a staff cost.
Sure.
So, so I would envision next meeting, after you get this, it would be on the table, we'd make, we'd do a vote on whether city initiates it or let the warming shelter initiate it.
Okay. It says okay. Is there a second? Did we get it?
Yeah.
Second?
This discussion.
We're not spending any money, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okey-dokey, are you choking?
There's a recusal over here.
And the mayor's recusing himself. Eric, back over to you.
You're done? Okay, back over, okay, anyone else? Thank you.
I have some items. Wanted to remind people that we still have openings on committees. I'm not sure from this memo how many openings we have on the Plan Commission, perhaps just one. We have at least one on the Arts Committee, three on the Budget Committee, two on the Library Board. Says we have five applications pending on the Parks Board with three vacancies, one application pending with five vacancies on the Sustainability Committee. Got some other vacancies. Have we had applications since this memo on the twelfth? No. So I encourage people to become involved. We need people on the Budget Committee soon.
Could I get the deadline on that, budgets? Kathy, I'm sorry to interrupt. When's the deadline on Budget Committee?
I don't, I just accept applications at all times, I don't have a deadline.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know when the first meeting is.
So we're accepting them now through, until it starts?
Whenever the first budget meeting is, I don't know when that is.
First week of April? Okay, that's, clarifying it for people, thank you, I'm sorry to have interrupted. Okay, anyone else? Okay. All I have is one thing, I wanted to thank KPTV for, from Channel Twelve from Portland coming out. They did a great story this morning on the float ferries and the finders keepers, and I think we got about fifteen minutes of free advertising, and it was terrific, so well done, and thank them for coming out, too. I met with one of their reporters, when do we have the rain, Friday or Saturday morning? Whenever, I, I met the next morning over at Kylo's, and they were doing a, a good story, and I just want to thank them for coming out and, and spreading the love. If nothing else, and.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I, I've got two announcements, two opportunities. One of them is early notice on the Community Days, which runs from April thirteenth through the twenty-first, and here's an opportunity for our nonprofits and other organizations in town to get their events during that week, you know, on the calendar, so they've got more publicity. Contacting Shirley Hill will do that. But again, this is an opportunity for all of us to be thinking about two thousand seventeen and who, you know, were our volunteers, and an opportunity to thank them through Community Days, and maybe recognize a man and woman of the year through their volunteer activities. So it's, we're early, but events are, are planning now. Shorter notice, Tuesday, January thirtieth is, you know, dinner at the Surf Rider, that's south, if you haven't, Forward League Park near there. Five to eight, a fundraiser for supporting Family Promise, but this is one of their celebrity servers, and you remember the, the city staff, Ed and Ron, kind of embarrassed us last time, much to their hard-earned effort in banjo playing. This time, the group is Rotary and Kiwanis are taking on each other, so.
Kiwanis.
All right, go Kiwanis.
Go Kiwanis.
So it's a surf, Surf Rider, again, January thirtieth, come on out to dinner and be served.
Can I hear something at this end? I want to gather.
Yeah, I do. I was just, I had asked her before, is there any way or interest in, like renters, percentage rate increases for renters in the city? Any kind of law that prevents renter, rent, you know, property management companies from a certain amount of percentage of rate increase? I don't know anything about it, other than some places have it, some places you don't, and I don't think we can have it. So there can be any kind of percentage from lease to lease or month to month, and is there a way to kind of protect renters?
I, I can look into it, and I can't tell you, 'cause my computer is updating, but there is a rent control statute where we're prohibited from adopting rent control statutes. I'm not sure if the most recent legislative session amended that. I know that there was some change in terms of exclusionary zoning provisions, but I don't know exactly, I don't follow landlord-tenant laws closely, but I can look and see if, if there's been any change to that and let you know.
I would appreciate it, you know, the rest of council, but I think, just knowing something is better than nothing.
I mean, it's, it's, it's just a, a quick look up, and I'll send a response to the whole council.
Okay, last chance, go and go and gone. All right, I want to thank y'all for coming in, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. Oops. Do you unplug your wire?
Yeah, I did.